Pastor, if you'd like to come forward and everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Let's join our hearts together in prayer today. Dear Heavenly Father, I come before your wonderful throne of grace, just so thankful for your love and mercy and grace. God, to be part of this great city called Beaumont. The plans that you have for this city and the leadership of this city, we thank you for. Lord, I pray for the council as they meet today, that you would give them wisdom and special understanding and discernment. God, as they make plans, then, Lord, that they would remember the needs of the people here and, Lord, that they would look at this place as their, not only as their home, but what the future holds. And, Lord, today, as we also remember friend W.L., and, God, thank you for sharing him with us for so many years, and I'm thankful that in that special way, that he, early in life, he heard the good news about Jesus, and he said yes to Jesus. And, Lord, that because of that today, then we can have that comfort of knowing that he's in this wonderful place called heaven. God, the other day, your word says that when he took his last breath here on planet earth, he took his next breath in the presence of the Lord in heaven. Your scripture telling us to be absent from this body is to be present with the Lord. So, thank you for that, and also, Lord, for this to bring comfort to his family and friends. But, God, you're the God of all comfort, and I just pray that as they grieve his passing and that, God, as they remember him, that you would just minister to them, hold each one close and speak to them in that small, still voice that you can. So, Jesus, I love you. Pray in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames, here. Mayor Protem Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Before we go any further today, I just wanted to let everyone know, as you can see here, first, I want to thank Pastor Felshaw for the willingness to give up his seat today to honor our friend and colleague, Councilmember W.L. Pate. Today's W.L.'s last meeting, and it's mine. And W.L. became an at-large council member in 2007, the same year that I became mayor. And that year, we had four new council members that, in 2007, and he was one of it, one of them, along with Gethro Williams-Right, who we've also lost in the past couple of years. And I just want to say that, you know, I sat beside W.L. for 14 years, he sat right here to my left, and we had our challenges and we had our good times, but he was always very true to the city and his position on the city council. And I know that he would want us to celebrate his life today and not be sad. I feel like that was the kind of guy he was. He always looked, and his glass was always full. So, I encourage y'all today to, let's have a full glass as we celebrate W.L.'s life and his tenure on the council since 2007. And if there's any council members that would like to make any comments, I'll open the microphone for that, and I do want to recognize that many of his family members, his daughter, his sister, his brother and sister-in-law are here. We appreciate y'all coming today, and our heartfelt condolences to your family. I know this was sudden, it was sudden for us, too, and we're so very sorry, but no, he's in a very good place. Councilmember?
Yes. Well, I served with W.L. a long time, and I thought about it, what could I say? And I just said, he has a love for every day of the week, and seven days a week. He loved his country, he loved his state, he loved his city, he loved his family, he loved the university, our university, and he definitely loved Babe Saharias. So, that's one thing, one of those are going to come up every time you talk to him. So, he's there, he's here, but we will, he'll always be with us, so.
Thank you.
I do offer my condolences to the family.
Councilmember Getz.
This is difficult. W.L. was a friend, and he was one of Beaumont's biggest cheerleaders. As Councilmember Samuel just said, he loved Beaumont, he loved Lamar, he loved his country. He was proud of his military heritage. He was very proud of his father, his mother, mentioned him frequently. He was one of the most affable people you could ever hope to meet. Always had a kind word, joke or a story to tell. I've heard many of them over and over, but that's okay, because they were interesting. And, you know, W.L. was always not known as W.L. He used to be known as Bubba. As he grew, he kind of discarded that nickname, but a lot of his friends still called him Bubba. And it reminded me of a story that I want to tell. It's, bear with me for a minute, it's kind of interesting, the way it turns out, but, you know, W.L. was an athlete as a young man. He played football at French High School, played quarterback, and he went off to play college ball. Played Louisiana Tech, won first string, won second string. He played behind a guy named Terry Bradshaw. And, you know, that's kind of a rough assignment, trying to get in front of Terry Bradshaw to play football. But Terry Bradshaw wasn't first string either. He played behind a guy named Phil Robertson, and, you know, from Doug Dynasty. And so, and W.L. will tell you that story, and I remember that story because at a National League of Cities Conference, we were at a hotel, we were checking out, and Terry Bradshaw was checking in. He was there at the front desk, and I was standing there next to W.L. I said, "This is Terry Bradshaw, you ought to go say hi to him, because, you know, you told me how you know him." And, "No, no, I don't want to bother him." I said, "Well, I'll go say something to him." And I said, "Mr. Bradshaw, I'm Mike Getz, I'm from the city of Beaumont, Texas, I'm a city councilman, I'm here with your friend, W.L. Pate." And he looked at me, he said, "W.L. Pate? Son, I don't know a W.L. Pate." I said, "Yeah, you do, you know, Bubba Pate." "Bubba, where is he? Where is ...?" And they went off, and they spent the next hour together. I am not kidding you. They were like, you know, two old friends. Well, W.L.'s here with us today in spirit. He is an old friend, and we're going to miss him.
Thank you.
To the Pate family, my condolences deeply. I met W.L. Pate years ago as a young man, having some concerns in the city of Beaumont. And I remember when I stepped up the run two years ago, and the night he defeated me, he contacted me and told me, "A.J., you have a bright future. Promise me you won't give up, stick with it, and your time will come." The day I got sworn in, we were standing right over there by that beautiful cop, and W.L. Pate told me, "You got a bright future. If you ever need anything from me, don't hesitate to ask me." And it's pen right here, the city of Beaumont pen, I asked him for that. And he gave it to me, I decided to make sure I wore it today to show my symbolic feelings for W.L. Pate. W.L. Pate was an advocate for the city of Beaumont. I looked at him as the billboard for Beaumont, Texas. So, today, we want to celebrate W.L., and I also want W.L. to know that I will promote Beaumont positively, to the fullest of my ability, and I will never in my power try to let any negative light shine on Beaumont, Texas. I will continue his legacy. So, today, I want your family to know that W.L. Pate is a legend in Beaumont. We thankful for his service, and I'll never forget his Lamar University stories and his Babe Saharias stories and what he means to the city of Beaumont. So, today, I just want to let you guys know, we know you're going through some tough times, but we, the council, the leaders of this city, we're with you guys, with the Pate family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. W.L. Pate, we will miss your wit and your wisdom. You were Beaumont's greatest advocate and everyone's friend. You were a family man, a civil servant, a patriot, a follower of Christ, and a son who honored his father, which you just don't see that much anymore. So, we honor you, we miss you, and our prayers are with the family. God bless you guys. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I was glad that I got to meet W.L. I met him when I was at the fire department on many occasions, and he always had a kind word for me. Even the short time that I was on council, he gave me advice, told me if I ever needed anything, to just give him a call. But I always remember what I most admired about him, me being a military man as well, that he went from being a private to being a colonel, and that's a very big accomplishment. Not many people do that. So, W.L., you'll be missed. My condolences to the family, to the Pate family, and rest in heaven.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I haven't known W.L. as long as many people in the room, but I have been blessed to know W.L. literally my entire life. I think the relationship between the Neal family and the Pate family goes back three generations, with my grandfather and W.L.'s dad being best friends that just kind of passed down from generation to generation. And one thing that W.L. and the entire Pate family has always been is a group of public servants. And I think it's important to make sure everybody understands the difference between a public servant and a politician. And W.L. was a true public servant. I can't think of anybody that loved Beaumont more than W.L. Can't think of anybody that loved his friends more than W.L. and family. And, you know, that's going to leave a big hole in Beaumont, and I think it's our responsibility to help carry on W.L.'s legacy. I can't think of, you know, every time you were with W.L., there was always somebody calling W.L., looking for advice, and W.L. was always the first one to want to offer it. And it was always good, sound advice. It was godly, he was talking from experience, and we're going to miss that. But just know that we're here for the family, and whatever I can do personally, please let me know.
Councilmember Pate, as we know, loved his family very much. He talked about it quite a bit. He loved his two daughters, he loved his brother, he loved his two sisters, talked about it again often. And we all know he loved the city of Beaumont. You never heard him say one negative thing about its people or its places, always positive. So, you know, I don't think we can think of a greater ambassador or advocate for the city of Beaumont than Councilmember Pate, and he's going to be missed by many, many people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I worked with Councilmember Pate for the 14 years that he was on council, and you work with a person that long, you get to know them pretty well, and, you know, and we all know he loved stories, had lots of stories to tell, and we could go on and tell lots of stories about him. But one thing about him, I'll tell this, you know, he'll call and want to talk to you and ask you, well, 20 minutes later after having talked to you without having caught a breath, he'll ask you, "Well, that's why I call you, I want to get your thoughts on it," without me having said a word. But, you know, in the law, there's a reasonable person standard, and one thing I came to know about him was, whatever he did and, you know, whatever decision he would come to, he wanted to achieve that reasonable person standard, and that's what I admired about him. He was a level-minded person, but at the end of the day, he always wanted to do what was right. And I know that, y'all know that, as his family members, and I just want to extend my condolences to the family. Stay strong. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do think the family wants to take some photos, but before you do, just, we thank you for W.L.'s service and for sharing him with us, and he's with us today in spirit. And as I said, I know for certain that he would want us to celebrate today and to, I mean, he was just a positive person, and as everyone said, never had a bad word to say about Beaumont, Texas, and that's commendable, because there's a lot of bad words these days, and we should all strive to be more like him. So, if y'all would like, the funeral is at 1:00 at One Church, One City, One City Church, sorry, I got it confused, 1:00 on Friday. And we would like for y'all to take these flowers, too, if you're going to stay through the meeting or if you're going now, please take them. If y'all, they did ask if we would take a photo, council, so if we could do that? Y'all want to do that still? Pates?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Can I see you? Did you see, did you see Alvin?
He's a little fragile. He's making a grand entrance. Well, W.L. not only loved Beaumont, but he loved our local businesses. So, it is fitting today that we celebrate 100 years of one of our local businesses. We do have a proclamation today celebrating Texas Coffee Company, and this being my last meeting and my last proclamation, it means a lot to me because the Texas Coffee Company is my friend, and the owners are my very good friends. And so, it, thank y'all for having your 100th anniversary on my last meeting. Whereas, the Texas Coffee Company, makers of Tex Choice Seasonings and Seaport Coffee, is celebrating its 100th anniversary with new commemorative items, customer discounts, and more, and more in July of this year. The family-owned company will have celebration activities next month by sharing archived photos and nostalgic items on its social media, followed by the release of a new cookbook full of family recipes, memories, and photos. A new commemorative Tex Choice Steak Seasoning tin will usher in the summer for customers as well. And whereas, since its founding in 1921, Texas Coffee Company has been family-owned and headquartered right here in Beaumont, Texas. Tex Choice and Seaport products are sold at HEB, Market Basket, Kroger, Jack's Packet, Brookshire Brothers, Walmart, Sam's, and other fine retailers, and at texjoy.com. And whereas, the Texas Coffee Company is known for the signature all-purpose Tex Choice Steak Seasoning, the Texas Coffee Company has a variety of spices and coffee sold throughout southeast Texas. In recent years, Tex Choice has broken through to more exposure with more retailers throughout Houston and northeast Texas, as well as the greater Austin area. The 100th anniversary celebration will involve all markets where Tex Choice is sold. And whereas consumers can learn more of what's to come, join in sharing memories and experience the anniversary by following facebook.com/techchoiseasonings, facebook.com/seaportcoffee, as well as instagram.com/techchoiseasonings and instagram.com/texascoffeecompany. And now, therefore I, Becky Ames, Mayor of the city of Beaumont, celebrate the 100th anniversary of our local Texas Coffee Company and do hereby proclaim that the month of July be named Texas Coffee Company Month in Beaumont to celebrate 100 years in business and wish the company many more years of service to our local and national customers. Our, I just said that, it says "its," but it seems like it's ours, right? Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto me set her hand and cause the syllabus city of Beaumont to be affixed, signed today, June 22, 2021. And accepting today are our friends, the Fertitas, Joseph, CEO, Sandy, all of you that are here, please come up and shake everyone's hand, and feel free to say a few words and introduce the family members and friends that are with you today. If y'all would like to come up, please.
Mayor?
Yes?
And Mayor, you know, I guess this is it, huh? So, here we get it, right here, signed by you.
Signed by me, the last one.
What a wonderful, what a wonderful honor.
The last one. Yep.
Thank you.
Nice to see y'all. Thank y'all so much for coming. We appreciate y'all, thanks for all you've done in our community, and hope you continue on. Do you want to take a photo first? Okay. Joseph, if you'll talk into the microphone, because you're on television. But you can do, you can pull it to this side if you want to talk to people.
That's okay. I just wanted to say that the Pate family are not here, but our families from the Texas Coffee Company, send them our condolences and our sympathy. And, you know, W.L. and our fraternity brothers, and he taught me how to spit-shine shoes. My brother Donald says, "No, no, that's not the story he tells." He tells that he wanted you to show him how, so he gave, you gave him his shoes, and he spit-shined them. And he said, "And you've been delegating ever since." But anyway, thanks to our family for being here, my wife Sandy, and to our friends who always spread the joy. We would not be 100 years old if it weren't for our family and our friends and our customers. And, you know, right here in Beaumont, Texas, and as y'all know, W.L. Bubba loved Beaumont, Texas, and he loved the Texas Coffee Company. And so, thank y'all. This is an unbelievable recognition and honor. My family appreciates it, and our company appreciates it, and we appreciate y'all. Not an easy job, is it? But no jobs are easy. My brother tells me that every day. This is my brother Donald, my cousin Steve Lyle, our sales, regional sales manager Toby Castro, his wife Diane, Steve's wife Jill Rita. She was a Bishamy, you know, they had something to do with this company, too. As y'all know, her brother was the past president, Carlo III, very unique individual, and we miss him. And I introduced my wife Sandy. Sandy, you know, kept asking me, "You think the city will do a proclamation for y'all?" And I said, "Well, I don't know Sandy." But, you know, I sometimes wonder, she works in mysterious ways. So, here again, thank y'all. What an honor, and, you know, it's just a privilege to have you as this last proclamation for us. And thank y'all, but keep spreading the joy, okay? Thank y'all.
Thank you, Tess.
Thank you.
So, that does conclude our proclamations, recognitions today, and so, if you're here for that purpose and you need to leave, now's the time to do so. However, you're always welcome to stay. I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with Section 551.072 of the Government Code to Witt 555 Main Street. Consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Bethany Q. Spell versus the city of Beaumont, case number B-0205591. And I'd like to turn it over to the city manager now. I think there's a presentation that the staff would like to make.
Yeah, Mayor and council, it's not posted, so we cannot have a discussion. However, we thought it was the right thing to do to talk to you about. We've had more discoloration water calls in the past week than normal. It's something that all of us as staff members have dealt with our entire careers. You know, it comes and goes, and peaks and valleys, and so forth. But it's definitely something that we're aware of, but we know there's talk about it, especially on social media, and wanted Bart Barcoiak and Mike Harris to come forward and just give you a little background. If you want additional information, we've had work sessions in the past, we can always have another one. But Bart, if you'll come forward, I think, you know, Troy's here, Daniel, Molly, if you could introduce your staff, Mike come forward. This is the best group of people I've seen working together. It's a great group. They know what they're doing. I'll ask Bart and Mike to, again, make a presentation. If you want more information, all you have to do is ask for it, and we'll get it to you. So, Mike Harris is basically over water and sewer repair and the sewer plant. Bart Barcoiak wears a lot of different hats, as you know, he's a public work director, but he's also over the water plant. So, working with key staff on a daily basis, and, again, they make it look easy, it's not easy. They work really hard, weekends, nights, they get it done. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I believe y'all know Molly Villarreal, city engineer, and then Troy Pierce, our water plant superintendent, and Daniel Bakara, the assistant water plant superintendent are here as well in the audience. I know we've been talking about discolored water. I know I've given a number of interviews with local news stations. I was talking to the Chamber of Commerce last night about public works in general and got questioned about water, discolored water in the middle of that. So, I'm going to go through kind of what led up to the increased calls, but before I do so, this is not a problem that's specific to Beaumont, it's a problem that exists everywhere, and I figured somebody had to put together a nice informational video on this, and of all places, I found one from Singapore. So, it's about two minutes long, it does a good job explaining where the discolored water is coming from. I'd like to go ahead and play that.
Is the water from your tap looking a little brownish? This may occur under specific circumstances, but there are steps you can take to fix it. First, let us understand what causes tap water to appear brownish. Tap water contains Tap water contains minute amounts of naturally occurring minerals such as iron and manganese. They do not pose a health concern. These minerals form sediments that settle down at the bottom of pipes over time during normal usage. An increase in speed or change of direction of water flow may cause these mineral sediments to be re-suspended and travel with the water to the taps. So when you turn on the tap, the water appears brownish. So what can cause changes in water flow in the pipes? When there is a pipe leak, the water flow will be affected due to a change in water pressure. This will churn up the settled mineral sediments in the process. Maintenance operations such as the routine cleaning of water tanks, flushing of service pipes and buildings, and the testing of fire hydrants can also sometimes cause water to flow faster than usual and in the process stir up settled mineral sediments too. Now, what can you do if you notice the water at your tap looks brownish? You should run your tap until the water clears up before you consume it. You should also avoid using your washing machine until the water runs clear. To clear brownish water, POV officers will flush the water mains in a controlled manner until the water clears up. Town council and managing agents will also flush the service pipes and the water tanks at your premises too. Remember, if you see brownish water, let the taps run till the water runs clear. If the water does not clear up after 10 to 15 minutes, please call POV's hotline for assistance and our officers will be glad to help you.
So they did a nice job kind of explaining what I've talked about in the past of the minerals being present in the water, settling out of the water into the pipes. And normally you don't see that until they're stirred up and carried along with the water flow into the building. So that brings us to why we got so many calls here recently. So normally we'll get, say, one to three calls maybe a day on average, could be for a water break, small water line break somewhere in town. But they escalated quickly the other day. And what that coincided with was the resumption of fire hydrant testing throughout the city. So right now, what the fire department does is they will go out and they will start testing and servicing the hydrants and they do it all at once with all the stations across the entire city. Now despite trying to take care to open the hydrant slowly, close it slowly, what that does is each of these hydrants has a stand pipe that goes from the hydrant to the main. The water in that pipe normally doesn't move anywhere, so it provides a great place for sediment to gather. So when you open up that hydrant, if you open it up a little too quickly, or if you close it a little too quickly, or even if you don't let it run clear, or even if you do all that, still you're changing the flow in the system, just like we saw in the video from Singapore. So it stirs up those sediments in the system. And you go out and you do, you know, a bunch of hydrants at one time. We went from, you know, almost no calls a day, one or two calls a day, and we shot up to, was it the first day, 80?
Went from 30 up to about 100 calls.
So 100, 100 calls. So we flushed and tried to do what we normally do and get the discolored water out of the system. Due to the large number of calls, we decided to go ahead and pause the fire hydrant testing after talking with fire. Right now, as y'all are aware, we have two sources of water in the city of Beaumont. We have the Pine Street Plant that does surface water off the river, and we have the Loeb Wells, which is north of Beaumont, that also provides water into the system. But that's been shut down for repairs due to Harvey. Now, we can look historically, and when Loeb is up and running, we have less discolored water calls. We believe that's because the system is more evenly pressurized by pumping into the city at two different locations. And so we've decided to pause that fire hydrant testing until we turn Loeb back on. We're very close. We're hoping to turn it back on the week of July 12th. And once that's back on and those pressures are equalized, then we're hoping that if we're careful opening those hydrants slowly, letting them run clear, and we have better pressure equalization across the city, it'll minimize that water discoloration. So the other thing going on right now is that looking at water quality, we decided to initiate a free chlorine burn in the system. And what that means is we normally treat water with chlorine and ammonia. It forms chloramines as a disinfection byproduct. And we eliminated the ammonia out of that, and we're running free chlorine. And the purpose of that, and systems do it pretty much on a yearly basis usually, is if you're running chloramines in the system, it's a good persistent disinfection byproduct in the water system. However, it will tend to form harmless bacteria in your water distribution system. Doesn't affect us, it has no bearing on health, but unfortunately for us, what it does do is in hot weather, that bacteriological growth can eat up chlorine residual. And then you can have problems maintaining a good chlorine residual in your system, which is very important for safety. So we were initiating that free chlorine burn to burn those bacteria out of the system and clear that out prior to the hot summer months that we experience. So what's happened as well, though, we believe, is that when we were trying to flush and get all the discolored water out from the hydrants, we had pretty much burned that biofilm out of the system and then we're still running the free chlorine. And we believe that free chlorine has started stripping the deposited manganese within the distribution system and causing additional discolored water. So in order to clear this up, we decided to go ahead and switch over a little early back to chloramines. We did that this morning. So we believe that with the continued flushing in the system and with the resumption of the chloramines, that we'll get the water back clear. And then hopefully, when we resume the fire hydrant testing with Loeb on, we won't experience as much of this discolored water as we have this time around. I wanted to talk a little bit as well about maintenance in the system and what we're trying to do to address discolored water just in the long term. We've gone through and we cleaned the Dishman Elevated Storage Tank. We also cleaned the Northwest Storage Tank. And the West Storage Tank is not only being cleaned, but it's undergoing full rehabilitation right now. That'll be finished about August. So that basically does half of our elevated storage tanks in the system, cleans them out. And then we're also rehabilitating the above-ground storage tanks at Loeb as part of getting it up and running. So those will be cleaned as well. And then our plan is to clean the remaining storage tanks in the system next fiscal year. And then we're going to come back the following fiscal year and revisit those first three that we cleaned this year and evaluate how much accumulation we've gotten of manganese and iron buildup in the tank and see if that two-year frequency is right for us to keep those clean on an ongoing basis. And then the other thing that we're doing is the flushing program, and I'm going to turn that over to Mike Harris to talk about flushing.
Thank you, Bart. One of the things I wanted to mention this afternoon about the distribution system is that with the discolored water, the only true effective way to get rid of the discolored water is flushing. You know, we've got crews that go out daily and flush every day. We've got crews that will, they do dead-end flushing. Anywhere there's a dead-end main, we go out and we flush. That is a TCQ requirement. What that does, it brings in the fresh water into the dead-end or into the main. Some of the issues we run into when we start getting discoloration is water age. Water's been there sitting too long. So like I said, that's why we go out and we flush. We've also, we've got a crew that goes around weekly. We've got about 50-plus points throughout the entire city. That's not part of the dead-end flushing, but it's a weekly flushing routine that we started about four months ago. They go out, they flush every week, the same locations. What we do, as we see discolored water, the areas that they're the hardest hit, we look and evaluate the water mains, find the best areas to flush, and we'll add a point on our map, on our flushing map, to go out and flush these areas. So once we get that done, like I said, we do that each and every week. It's the same points every week. I know if you drive around, especially this last week or so, you've seen a lot of hydrants flushing. Like I said, we've run into a lot of discolored water in the last week. Just wanted to kind of go over some numbers with you guys, what we looked at. The last week of May, we had three discolored water calls the entire week. And of course, that's with our dead-end flushing, with our routine weekly flushing that we do. We usually keep an average of three to five calls a week, maybe one to two calls a day. Compare that to, we have 53,000-plus water connections in the city. So if you have that many water connections and you have two or three connections that are discolored, I mean, it's a very small, minute part of it, okay? Whenever the fire department started, June 14th, started doing their hydrant testing, that day we had 30 discolored water calls. So we're like, okay, we're know this is going to happen. We had requested the fire department to notify us, let us know what areas they're going to be working in, so we could go behind them and flush, try to stay on top of things. By Thursday, we had 98 discolored water calls. I mean, each and every day, we steadily climbed, studied, climbed. That's whenever the conversation took place with the fire department to suspend the discolored water, I mean, suspend the fire hydrant testing. Once we did that, we've had crews flushing to 9, 10 o'clock each night through the weekend, getting the system cleared back up. And I'm happy to say, I checked it at 11:30 before I left to come up here, and we had 16 discolored water calls today. So it's clearing up, we're making a difference. And like I said, the only way to get rid of this discolored water is through flushing. And like I said, that's why you see so many hydrants out and so many people out opening hydrants. But one of the things that we're looking towards, we've done it in the past, the past month or so, around the Windsor area, is unidirectional flushing or directional flushing. That's the most effective way to flush when you get out in the water mains and you get to discolored water. Basically, what we do there is we isolate a main, make it basically a dead-end main, open a hydrant, flush it wide open, flush it hard, and that will pull all this sediment out of a hydrant. Once you pull it out and you get that section clear, you open it back up and move to another section. Like I said, we have put together some plans, we've done a little bit of it, we've had good results with it. One of the particular apartment complexes was having a lot of sediment issues, and we went out and we did the directional flushing and haven't heard back from them. So like I said, we've had good luck with it, and that's what we're moving towards and we're going to keep moving towards, doing the directional flushing. And as we do it, we're going to branch out and go further and further and further out into the area to, like I said, get rid of this.
All right. We appreciate it. Thank y'all so much for this report. And just to remind everyone, if you do experience it, call 311, because we do keep track of where it's coming from.
If there's have questions, we can set up a meeting with key staff, you can meet with them upstairs in the conference room, you know, maybe one at a time, and they can answer any and all questions you may have.
Today, it's not posted, so.
And if you want to have a give and take, we can have a work session in here if two council members or more would like one, but we'd have to do that in the future.
All right. Thank y'all for the report, we appreciate it. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on scheduled agenda items one through eight, now is the time to do so. If you would like to speak on one of these items and haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Right now is for one through eight. That's the main agenda and the consent agenda. And I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business if you're here to speak on any other item.
Nicholas, and I think that's Hunger, 9155 Mapes, Beaumont, Texas, want to speak on item number two on the agenda.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council, extra council, and Paid Seat. I've known Mr. Paid for a long time, so to have that happen at the beginning of this meeting was touching for me as well. But I came to speak today about the Arctic Fox MDR agreement that you guys are planning on voting on. Just with all the fear that is out there right now with data security, I feel like that this is a good step for the town to make, but it again is a step that may be happening a little hastily. Data security is very, very important. The issue that I have with the contracts that are going to be signed for this Arctic Fox Company in Minnesota is that they're a small company that is basically just reselling someone else's product. And in this area, in this community, with all the ExxonMobil people that are locked out and our entire history of this city being dependent on the oil industry, and we all know that that's not going to be around for our grandkids, that Beaumont needs another industry that we can build off of, and data security could be one, that you could start something in-house in the city and do it the way that we're going to be paying other people to do it. All the money that we're going to spend with just this one contract, there may be $300 or $400 spent in the city of Beaumont in hotels and lunches for the contractors to come in, set everything up, and then leave, and cash those checks in Minnesota and spend that money in Minnesota. In Beaumont, we need to be able to have a city council that can go out and have projects like this that the public knows about, that the public can be interested in, and that the public could, you know, possibly have more information about. I think there's a communication issue in this city that all the constituents aren't getting all the messages. Taylor actually sent me a message the other day after I spoke last week, wanting to sit down and talk about the plans for what was the AT&amp;T building, which is great. I already know those plans, though. And a small number of people know those plans, but the majority of the city doesn't know those plans. The majority of the city is just lost and is looking for guidance. And that's why even with only 16,000 people turning out for the recent election, that's enough people to know that they care about their city and they want it to continue to be here. I'm at a position in my business right now where we're expanding, and I have to figure out if I'm going to do that in Beaumont or if I'm going to do that somewhere else. I want to raise my family here. I want to raise my kids here. I just took my kids to swim lessons at the BISD Naterium. My kids don't go to BISD schools, but we went to the BISD Naterium because Sheena Walker was somebody I graduated with, and she's basically built that entire swim program since we were in high school. So I have that connection with her, so I know that my kids will be safe under her care. And I want to continue to raise my kids in a place, Beaumont being that place, that I can say that. And I don't know that we're going down the path where I will be able to say that two years from now, 10 years from now.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas. She wants to speak on the consent agenda.
Do we know which item?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Allen, if you might state which item you want to speak on, that would be great.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Attorney, City Manager, and Officials. My name is Addie Allen. I'm standing here to speak on one, and I'm standing here to speak toward eight. Number one, I was here on the 15th of June, and I did not say anything about 555 Main. So I don't know what you do as far as rules of order or correction, but that should be corrected before the motion is passed. On number eight, I've stood here maybe three or four months ago talking about, City of Beaumont used to have a sign that said Superior Water. And I've spoken about water several times, and I appreciate the presentation today. However, I would ask if there is a report that is, can be sent to citizens from T- However, um, I would ask if there is a report that is, uh, can be sent to citizens from T E C Q? Or is it T C Q? T C E Q, I'd like to have one of those, because not only brown water, but there's other things in the water. And we've gone to a boil notice before, and just like the building, there wasn't very much information I felt comfortable about saying boil water or not to boil. So those are the two issues. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Mayor, in regards to her comments on the, um, on the minutes, I will make those corrections on her comments from last week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I'm sorry, no ma'am, that's it.
Okay. Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak on items one through eight? There's none, I'll close the floor, council. Um, you did her here, Ms., um, Ms. Bruce Sarge, she will correct those minutes. With those corrected, is there a motion, please, on the cons-, uh, on the consent agenda? Thank you, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously, item number six, please.
Man, council, item number six is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the title of chapter fourteen, Article fourteen point oh-five, amending Article fourteen point oh-five, Section fourteen point oh-five point oh-oh-one-six, Section fourteen point oh-five point oh-oh-two-eight, Section fourteen point oh-five point oh-oh-three-B, and Section fourteen point oh-five point oh-oh-five, repealing Section fourteen point oh-five point zero-zero-six, and amending Section fourteen point oh-five point oh-one-three of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas to make changes relating to event services, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing for a penalty. The proposed amendments outline rates to include beverage access in the Civic Center, the Julie Rogers Theater, the Jefferson Theater Event Center, and the Lakeside Center. And Emily Wheeler is here, she's the Director of Event Services and worked with the city attorney and me on this item, and she can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, may I have a motion on this item, please? There's a motion on the floor for approval, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion, questions? Okay, Councilmember Getz and Councilmember Turner.
Okay, so the most significant item in here, to me at least, is the repeal.
Ms. Wheeler, if you wanna come forward, that'd be great, thank you.
Or the proposed repeal of, uh, the food and beverage concessionaire. I'm trying to understand what the policy has been historically and why we're looking at changing it. As I understand it, our historical policy is to require the, the city would send out a request for proposals to a concessionaire that would have the exclusive rights, subject to waiver by the city manager or, uh, the events services director, but would have the exclusive right to manage the concession at silly city facilities. And that goes back to Treat America for years ago, and then WOW Food Concepts more recently. And what is guiding the policy change here of getting away from that?
We went out for bid, um, well, let's start from the beginning. We had been under contract, an expired contract with WOW Food Services for two years. We were on a month-to-month contract. And we, um, when we reopened at a hundred percent, we went out for bid for a new concessions and alcohol, um, vendor, and we did not get any bids, and we would like to move forward, or we are, we have moved forward with not having one in-house. Um, it's much more in line with what venues do across the state. Most of them that are municipality-owned are, um, they operate under an open alcohol policy where the client is required to either, if they bring in alcohol to give to their customers, then they, um, have to use T A B C certified bartenders. If they are selling a cash bar, then they have to get, uh, permitted from the state.
Okay, it's still a radical departure from what we were doing. And then we went out for bid trying to find someone to pick up the, uh, expired food and concession contract from WOW. So even though you're now saying that it's in line with what other cities are doing, it seems as if a couple of months ago, we were still trying to have an exclusive concessionaire. And let me just say this, to me, it opens the door of accountability. And when you have a dedicated services, uh, a concessionaire under contract, you have someone you can hold accountable for T A B C licensing, you can hold them accountable for quality of food. And if you just open it up to anybody that applies, and yes, I realize they have to represent that they have the proper licensure, but it might be people that you haven't vetted thoroughly enough to know what you're gonna get. And then, you know, you, you could have some bad experiences. I, I just, I think we're moving pretty fast on this. I understand that we have to have somebody in our facilities to do the work. I do know that WOW Food Concepts offered to extend their contract through the end of the year, but that was rejected.
You're gonna have to correct him on a number of things.
Well, well, feel, feel free, but, but I do know that that happened. And I, I guess I'm trying to understand why, why we're moving in this direction.
Yeah, first, it's not very different than what we were doing. Go through the different facilities, the Civic Center, the Julie Rogers, the Jefferson, the Event Center, how this isn't a radical change, that start there, and then the WOW issue, you'll address that.
So when the Event Center was opened in twenty-twelve, it was operating and continues to operate under the exact thing that we're proposing today. Um, if you have an event at the Event Center, you can bring in your own alcohol, you can serve it to your guests with, with no license whatsoever. If you operate a cash bar, it's against Texas state law to do so without the license. So it is the exact same way that that facility, um, has been operating since it opened. In addition, it's the exact same way that the new Tevis in Meeting Room at the Lakeside Center have operated since they opened.
Wait, Ms. Wheeler, uh, I, I appreciate that about the Event Center. And that continues a longstanding tradition of how we did things at the Harvest Club. And we, we continued that concept when we brought the Event Center online, and have extended that to the Tevis Room. But all the other facilities, the Jefferson Theater, the Civic Center, the, um, you know, all, all the other facilities, the Julie Rogers, that has never been like that before. Am I right or wrong on that?
The contract with the concessionaire, um, did have a clause in it that we could allow this exact same type of operations to occur in the Julie Rogers Theater, the Jefferson Theater, and the Civic Center. However, the previous concessionaire that we had, who you mentioned earlier, WOW Food Concepts, took a liquor license, a permanent license, out on the address of the Civic Center, which then precluded anyone from being able to serve those products inside that facility. So we were not able to offer that to clients there. People who did make those requests, when we were able, were able to operate that way in both of the other venues.
Does it offer an advantage for us to have a concessionaire that we know has been vetted by T A B C? To have the permanent licensure at the Civic Center? Is that, is not some, is that not something we should be interested in?
Our clients are a lot happier with being able to choose a vendor of their choice. That gives them also an opportunity to choose the products that are being sold. For instance, we had a complaint at a gala in the spring because the products that they wanted served to their customers, who were paying upwards of a hundred and fifty dollars a person or more, um, were not able to have those products served because the concessionaire at the time stuck to their own list of products that they wanted to serve. I think that our clients are much happier because it also gives them a fundraising opportunity. If a nonprofit hosted gala at the Civic Center and they pulled the license and they sell the alcohol or they sell the concessions, then they're recouping a lot of the costs that they're putting into investing in their event.
And how does this apply to the kitchen, if at all, at the Civic Center? We have a very nice commercial kitchen, uh, how, how will any of this affect that?
What we're proposing today does not have any connection to the kitchen. What we're proposing today is a change in some rates to include the ability to bring in alcohol into our facilities. The kitchen does not have anything to do with that.
Okay.
Councilmember Turner?
Okay, Emily, I think it's great that you had the increase in food and beverages, uh, because that would definitely help out with revenue coming into the City of Beaumont, so I think that's a great thing, okay? Uh, my second thing is, the only thing I didn't notice was, uh, kinda what Councilman Getz was saying, maybe we can add some form of accountability waiver, to whereas anything to do with food or liquor, I mean liquor, will fall strictly on the person who owns the liquor license for that particular event. So I think we should definitely add something to that magnitude in here.
We have that in place.
That's in there? Okay, so that's great. So that basically answers the questions that we discussed earlier, because it's real big that we wanna make it clear to the citizens that if alcohol is happening at one of our facilities, if anything take place, it will fall on the person that actually owns the actual liquor license. So you can clarify that, right, that, that's what's gonna take place, correct?
Yes, and just to clarify as well, the agreement between the vendor that's serving the alcohol, the agreement is going to be between them and the client. We have an agreement between us and the client. We are now no longer attached to anything related to the serving of alcohol, whereas previously, we had a contract with someone who was handling that. Now that will be, uh, something that the client and this vendor would agree on, whoever they choose. So the liability would be on them and not on us.
Okay, great. And my second request is, I didn't see it in here, maybe, maybe in here, but whoever's working a particular event for that night, can we get a staff member from the city side to go and check the certification of the bartenders for that particular event? You know, we wanna make sure that whatever bartender is serving, that it's a certified bartender, because if we check that, they're, or they're basically liable for serving anybody. Let's just say if somebody's underage at twenty-one gets served, we wanna make sure that it's really transparent and out there that that particular bartender with the licensing is liable for that. So like I said, I look at your price increases, I think is great because it kinda can offset whatever percentage you're actually getting from the independent caterer. So I, I see the offset of the numbers, and I think it's a good deal. I just wanna make sure we do our checks and balances to make sure the people that are actually serving have the proper qualifications to serve.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Second, Mayor, back, back to the T A B C issue. The, so, s- somebody can rent the Event Center, and as long as they're giving the alcohol away for free, they don't have to have a T A B C license?
They do not have to have a license, we request that they have T A B C certified bartenders. If they're selling it, they have to, if someone is operating a cash bar, they have to have a T A B C license.
So how, how does the process work to go get a T A B C license for, say, you wanna have an event Friday night at the Event Center?
The, um, the client would go and apply through the T A B C, and then there's several checks and balances that they go through with that state office. And then, um, they send us, once those things are approved, they send us a landlord approval letter that comes directly from T A B C. We review it, make sure all the information's correct, sign it, and then it gets returned, just stating that we, as the operators at the facility, are going to allow them to sell alcohol.
So anybody can go get one?
Pretty much.
And what's the timeframe?
I think it takes thirty days, but I, I don't know, do you know?
Yeah, correction, it takes thirty days, and you can't have anything bad on your record. You can't have any felonies, you can't, never been arrested, so it's a lot of stipulations, just anybody can go get them.
Well, they can try.
Yeah, you don't have to be a restaurateur, you don't have to own that type of business.
So it boils down to just a few people already have one?
Have a license? Um, no, I mean, a nonprofit could go and pull one for an event next month, not having ever had a license.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Getz?
Dram Shop liability is a fairly complex area of the law, and I haven't looked at it in a long time, but you made the representation, I think, that we're not gonna be attached to the, uh, person that's going to be selling the liquor, or selling the liquor any longer, which I presume is a, uh, an attempt to help isolate the city from liability. Is that correct?
I mean, that, that was not my intention of proposing these rates. However, we aren't, we have no agreement with someone coming in and, that has a T A B C certified license to come in and sell or serve alcohol. Those people are gonna be hired by the client. So each client could go out and they could choose from, you know, some random bartenders that they know to come serve, all the way to hiring someone like Debbie Bando or Frankie Randazzo or Five Under, or any of these businesses that have this catering license. The agreement's gonna be between our client and the vendor that they choose to provide these services, just as when they go get a sound company or a band to perform.
Our liability would not be increased any more than it would be if we were contracting with WOW. Necessary precautions are in place for the City of Beaumont.
Well, I, I appreciate that they will not be increased, but will they be diminished? I mean, if, uh, under the Dram Shop Act, if some fatality occurs from somebody drinking at the Julie Rogers Theater, yeah, they're gonna sue the company that provided the alcohol, but will the city still also be a potential target?
Well, we can't stop him from suing us, yeah. We complete, could be a potential target, will, will we be held liable? Probably not.
All right.
And, and this ordinance is basically fees and rates. Uh, there's a separate policy that is in place that the city operates under for their facilities.
Correct. Councilmember Julian?
Just a couple of things, uh, what exactly is the food and beverage access fee?
It's the ability to bring in food and beverage into the facility by using whoever vendor, whichever vendor the client wants.
And that's an additional to the rental fee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, uh, also it says you have, uh, cost more for auxiliary, auxiliary rental spaces in the different venues, like auxiliary rental space in the Civic Center, in the Julie Rogers, in the Jefferson Theater, what are they, the auxiliary rental spaces?
So those are existing ordinance rates that, um, we aren't proposing any changes to today. Those would be things like if you wanted to rent the lobby of the Civic Center, but no other portion of the venue for a small event.
Or the lobby of the Julie?
Exactly, yes.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you very much. Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor for item number six. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously, item number seven, please.
Item number seven is to consider a resolution approving a contract for curb and gutter repair. Bids were requested for a one-year contract with the option of a one-year extension at the same pricing. Five vendors were notified with one vendor. C-Tex Construction Corp. of Beaumont responding with an estimated annual amount of four-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and thirty cents. Uh, funds are available in the capital program, the street rehabilitation program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number seven. May I have a motion on this item, please? There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion, questions, comments? There being none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously, item number eight, please.
Item number eight is to consider a resolution approving a contract for the purchase of aluminum sulfate for use in the Water Utilities Department. Aluminum sulfate is used to purify the city's water supply. The Water Utilities Department expects to purchase approximately two thousand tons of this material during the term of the contract. Uh, Brentag Southwest Incorporated of Lancaster, Texas, responded with the low-qualified bid of a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents per ton. So we have a total estimated, uh, annual amount of three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty dollars. So we have a total estimated annual amount of $395,580. We're currently, we currently have a contract with Brentag. There are no local vendors that sell this product. Funds are available in the Water Utilities Fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number eight. May I have a motion on this item, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, mayor. I guess just more for clarification than anything is, why is there such a large spread in these numbers?
We don't know. I mean, a lot of people bidding from all over the country. Three companies from Texas, one from Little Rock, Arkansas, one in New Jersey for the public, one in Washington, state of Washington, two actually from the state of Washington. So, you know, those other areas again are much higher. We've done our job and we try to get the best pricing.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Durio?
In Bart's presentation, I didn't hear him mention anything about aluminum sulfate. Does this have anything to do with that, with the brown water?
No, sir, it doesn't have anything to do with the discolored water.
Okay.
All right.
Can you kind of, can you guys explain what is aluminum sulfate?
I wish Troy wouldn't have booked out of here. Is that the coagulant, Molly, do you know? Yeah, so basically you get, you get water in from the river and it's got a number of solids within the water. We have to drop those solids out. So you introduce aluminum sulfate in to bond with the solids and drop them out of the water and get it, get it down. So that's what it's used for, kind of a, almost a pre-pre-treatment, just to get it clear.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, there being none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion for approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. And I believe that does conclude our general business items today. So we will now move into public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on any item, now's the time to do so. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, hand it to the officer at the front of the room. She will, our city clerk will call out your name. We'd appreciate again if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Vernon Durden, 16436 Westberry Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, sir.
Hello, mayor.
Hello.
I've been away a while and I want to tell you, I've heard and watched the council operate today and it's quite pleasant attending tone of the meeting. It's, it's really pleasant. I'd like to commend the council on their decorum today. And whether you knew you got the last blast from me before you left? Well, I'm here to tell you that what you've done over this past 14 years as a mayor has been a model for lots of folks. You had a great career. You've seen some highs and lows, but I think one of the highs has been that you've spawned your predecessor, who's a female. And a lot of what you've done, your modeling, your decorum, your integrity to the job, is going to make a lot of other young women, not just black women, desire to be a mayor. So I want to commend you. This may be the last time I get a chance to talk to you as mayor. I want you to know that the things that you've done for the city has helped it grow. It's been not easy for you a lot of times, but you work with the council and the members and these folks that are following you now has a real good legacy to try to uphold. So thank you, Becky Ames, for the service you've provided to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Durden.
Addie Allen, 9695 Cross, Beaumont, Texas.
City Mayor, Council, City Attorney, City Manager. And I know you're beginning to see if, you know, wondering if I'm running for office. No, I'm not. But I am concerned about the city. And one of the things that I do is ask questions and don't get answers. And I would like to ask somebody from the council. I live in Amelia, there's planes flying, and that's good. But, you know, Beaumont has hours. The city municipal airport, are there hours? Who regulates it? I mean, they zoom, you know, all times of the day and night. And I want to know, if I go to Jack Brooks, there's comptrollers out there. But we have people that are just zooming down on these runways. And I'd just like to know something. You know, not that it matters to anybody else, but it matters to me and a couple of people. We've got night sleep, we have workers that sleep in the daytime. We've got sick people in that, in that area. And I mean, some of them are really moving slow. I mean, low enough, I saw a little guy taking pictures the other day. So that's one of my concerns. And one of my concerns too is the water. I was up here before. We've had superior water in Beaumont. And I know you're having brown water complaints. But past brown water, what about good drinking water? Is there cyclosporidium in it or whatever from these storms? There's things going on. So can we have some reports or something to let us know we're in good company? Thank you for your service and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Ms. Allen's a very nice lady, we've known each other a long time. But to answer your questions, we have to submit an annual report. And you brought that to me a couple of weeks ago. Is that, have we?
Yes, sir. It's out for printing right now. I don't know the specific date it's going to get mailed to all the water customers, but it'll be pretty soon.
So we're going to mail that out, Ms. Allen, you know, 42,000 customers. We have more accounts, but some people have irrigation accounts and so forth. We have about 42,000 customers. So we're going to send that out, we do it on an annual basis. People taking off and landing at the Beaumont Municipal Airport, you have to get approval when you fly out, when you fly in, the direction they tell you to come in and out. Councilmember Neal is a pilot and can probably answer that better than I can. But you do have to get approval when you come in and out and how you do so.
Can I, can I speak to one other item on that? The, I heard Ms. Allen multiple times talk about airplanes flying over 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, extremely low. So there's a group called Air Rescue. It's the med vac helicopter that's stationed, there's a couple of them in town at Baptist Hospital and St. Elizabeth. Those guys fly less than 500 feet and they're constantly going to Beaumont Municipal all throughout the night to get fuel. So that is probably what you're seeing all night long.
Thank you.
I'm Herman Davis, 790 Amarillo Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Yeah, I want to, I want to say that the mayor, this is probably the last time we see you really as you are. But I just want to thank you and your husband for being a family and friend to us and my family. And to the Paye family, I would like to know, I'd like to tell them that every time I would call Mr. Paye for anything, he was there, especially fixing my potholes in my, in my, in my neighborhood. And where in my old neighborhood, the Fair Arch, he was there to pave that street there. We had, he had to pave the street. And I want to say this, I think you already took up the issue about the water. I just want to let you know that I'm a, I'm a person that, when I came after that big storm, when our, when our water problem, my filter had turned all brown and dark. And every time it would turn like that, I could take it off. But now I can't take it off at all. I can wash it off. But I just want to let you, let you know that, what it did for me. And I'm thankful for what you're going to do in the future with the water in the future. I'm glad you spent, you spent that money for that. And I think, you know, I, I was grateful to hear you say that. And, you know, I haven't been here, up here to vote for like 20 years now. And I'm just happy to see everybody like yourself doing so good. And I had a chance to, I'm Mr. Gess, I talked to Mr. Gess and I passed her there. And I got to know a lot of people during this election. And I'm very fond of everybody. And I'm glad to see everybody working together and hope we can work together in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And that's all I have, mayor.
For councilmember colleagues, mayor, this was their idea and key staff, that your council, fellow councilmembers wanted to present this to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Heavy. Well, thank y'all so much, I appreciate it. And I guess that was all the comments, so I didn't.
It was.
Y'all had a plan, I take it. Well, I just want to say thank y'all, everybody that came today and the well wishes that I've received over the last few weeks. There have been many. And I'm going to miss it, it's bittersweet. When you've come every Tuesday for 27 years, it's going to be odd not to do so. But I know that the city's in good hands and will move forward and do all the right things because we have great people up here, but we also have great citizens and we have an excellent staff that carry through the desires of our citizens and of our council. So I don't have a whole lot to say. I'm trying to be strong through this because I've been here since I was a little girl, almost. I was in my 30s. And my husband actually even came with me, I guess, maybe to make sure that I was safe and didn't cry or anything. I'm not going to, I'm good. But I'll be here shortly, next week, to canvass the votes and then I'll turn the, the seat over to our next mayor, Robin Mouton. So I appreciate everyone that came today and I appreciate all your well wishes. We had a great, great celebration last Tuesday at the event center. And it was packed even though the weather was horrible. But, but I just can't say enough for, for my time here and how much it's meant to me and how much I've learned. I was sitting here a while ago when we were discussing all these different things and I recognize that we have some newer people and some that have been here a while. But it gets pretty bad when you know what the staff is going to say before they say it. Because, you know, when you've been around along, you've listened and you know about what's happening. And, and so maybe that might tell me it's, it's time to go when you, when you can recognize what's going to, what the person's going to say, Emily, before they say it. So thank y'all so much. Rodney, did you have something you were trying to tell me to say? I saw you waving at me. Did I forget something? Okay, all right. Well, thanks to everyone and I appreciate, and these flowers are beautiful and thank you so much. And it says 27, that's because I'm 27, right? Times three, no. Okay, thank y'all so much. That's all, that's all the comments? Okay, I'll move now to councilmember comments and I'll start with you, Councilmember Durio.
I just want to thank you for your service, mayor. I was glad that I got a chance to work with you and I'm pretty sure some of the advice that you've given me in the short time that I've been here, I'll carry it on with me. I'm sure I'll see you around.
You will. And I appreciate that. And I'm happy that I got to serve sometime with y'all that were not on before because it means a lot. Anytime you serve with someone new, it makes a difference and you learn things. So I appreciate you as well, thank you.
And also, I just wanted to thank the Water Department staff. I know it's been pretty rough on y'all these last few days. I've gotten my share of phone calls and emails also. And thank y'all for, for working hard to take care of that stuff, I appreciate it. Thanks to Park Department, Parks Department. We had an awesome Juneteenth celebration out at Terra Park. It was, it was great, everybody had a very nice time, fun. I know my family thoroughly enjoyed themselves. So I want to thank staff for that also. Also, I want to say is, we have a new council, we're getting ready to have a new mayor. We have a new mayor coming and I'm ready to go to work and work with them for positive things in Beaumont, Texas. Not only council and staff, but the citizens also. We all have to work together, I want everyone to be a part in the success of Beaumont.
Absolutely, thank you, councilmember. Yeah, councilmember Gess?
Thank you, mayor. And I want to just start by saying to you that although we have not always had a completely harmonious relationship, I have always known that you are working in the best interests of the city of Beaumont. And I know that you believe strongly in, in the city of Beaumont and in its citizens. So I compliment you for that. And I know that you will continue to do great things in your future endeavors. I also want to congratulate Mayor-elect Mouton on her win. There's, it's no secret to many that I supported her opponent. But Robin Mouton won this race and she deserves the opportunity to lead the city and she will have my support. If she does a good job, then Beaumont wins. If she doesn't, she'll have an opponent. So, you know, we look forward to her doing a good job. I also want to mention that tonight, I know there's a dinner for you, but the Dallin West Neighborhood Association has its regularly scheduled meeting tonight, which I will be attending. And we have Chief White there to give a presentation. So if you have not got any plans tonight, the Dallin West Neighborhood Association will be meeting. And it's not its regularly scheduled date because of early voting. We had to move it back a week. But it will be at Rogers Park starting at 6:30. We've talked a lot about W L Paye today and I'm not going to go back into that because I don't want to get emotional again. But I do think that the way this tribute was handled to him, Councilmember Felsaw giving up your seat, offering your church for his services Friday, commendable and very, very well done. Thank you for that. It was, it was the right thing to do. Lastly, I'm going to talk a minute about the AT&T building. And I know y'all think, he was doing so good, but. We're going back up and talk about this at executive session. And last week, we tabled a motion because we wanted to give the citizens the opportunity to peek behind the curtain and see exactly what the plan is. Well, I'd like to know what the plan is too, because the only thing I've seen so far does not point to development of that site. Now, I know the Beaumont Enterprise, and I see my friend Dan Wallach back there, wrote this editorial on Sunday, which says, you know, tear down the building, empty for nearly a decade and replace it with one or two restaurants similar to the successful wheelhouse in Port Neches on the Neches River. That sounds great. I have not been made aware of any developers that are waiting in the wings to do that. You know, if they were out there and I knew about something like that, I would certainly. You're going to correct me? Okay. I would certainly take a look at this perhaps from a different standpoint, but I'm not aware of anything like that. So with that being the situation, I cannot support the purchase of a building for $2,700,000 plus dollars when we know that's more than the value of the building. The first city building just sold for a little over a million dollars downtown. And it's almost fully occupied, it's 70, 60, 70% occupied and it's got a parking garage. So we're going to be paying more for something than it's worth without a definite plan of what we're going to do. And then we're going to have to pay the cost of demolition, which my sources tell me that could be as much as a million dollars. So now you're up to $3.7 million. Cost of landscaping, putting grass on the site, another $200,000, $300,000. It's a $4 million deal. So I just, I just can't understand that. I've said in the past that I do support riverfront development. And there's a way we can get there, I believe, without even purchasing the AT&T building. And I encourage everybody to Google Celebration Park, Naples, Florida. I've shared this idea with a few people already, but I want the public to know that we can do something to open up our riverfront and develop it on land that we already own. For that $4 million, a whole lot less than that $4 million. The whole idea of opening up the riverfront is what? We want to have people to be able to come downtown and have a meal, maybe a glass of wine, you know, listen to some music. wine, you know, listen to some music and enjoy the river. Look at Celebration Park, Naples, Florida. That concept was created in 2018 and it is just kicking it out of the park over there. It's a food truck park. They've got eight food trucks, but they've also got other amenities there and they built a band stage and they built restrooms. It's wildly popular. It's becoming a tourist destination. We can do that here, so I understand that we're gonna be voting on this again in the future, but I would encourage us to look at other options before we go down this course.
Councilmember Turner.
My first 30 days on the City Council was very enjoyable, but I do need to say this. Roughly two weeks ago, we had an executive session in reference to the AT&amp;T Building and in the executive session, Chris Boone was making a presentation on the plans for riverfront development. With me being new, I'm watching the process, seeing how it goes and the executive session didn't finish because we had some councilmen walk out and we didn't get to finish the full development plans of the riverfront development. So for us to say that that's not a plan, I just want the citizens to know, we did have an executive session and we went over the plan and we were not able to finish the plan and we continued on with some councilmen that did walk out. And I'm a younger councilman, I'm looking to do things, I want everybody to work together, but we can't release a plan, we can't do a plan if everybody's not willing to sit at the table and work together. So I want the citizens to know that we did have an executive session to release a plan to the public, but we did not finish the executive session because some people did walk out. Furthermore, I want Mayor to know that as a kid, I never thought the day would come that I was a student in high school watching the mayor that I'm next, currently sitting next to. So it's inspirational. I appreciate your service, I appreciate everything you've done. Juneteenth weekend was amazing. I think the entire community came out and to our new mayor, Robin Mouton, I want you to know that our council, we're here ready to work and to Roy West, I want to thank you because you've done a great job and I have a high level of respect for you as well. But Robin, I want you to know if you're watching, that your team is only, you are only as strong as your team around you and I feel like we have a strong team up here and we're gonna work together to move this city forward, so I want to let the city know that in a positive aspect. And Beaumont United High School, the boys' basketball team hosted a free camp last week and I want to commend them for hosting a free basketball camp. They're the state champions of Beaumont, Texas and they hosted a free camp. The kids participated as well as the coaches. The girls, they also hosted a free camp last week and currently Beaumont United Girls' volleyball team is hosting a free volleyball camp. So if you have kids that's looking for something to do in the summertime, I want you guys to actually go out and support some of these free programs because we want to do more things for our youth, we want to get them engaged, we want to do positive things, but I did want the community to know where we are with the plans with riverfront. Some developers have came and spoke with city staff and looked at some of our property, so I want to make sure the community knows that plans are being taken place. I just want the truth to be out to the community and I want the narrative to be controlled by all of us working together. So thank you for your comments and thank you for listening.
Councilmember Felsaw. Again, thank you for.
You're welcome. Mayor Ames, for 27 years, you served the city of Beaumont with dedication and genuine concern. You served its citizens with fairness and equality regardless of their race or their political affiliation. I watched as you stood your ground in the face of unreasonable, often mean-spirited criticism, all done in the guise of political humor and our political gain. Over the last 27 years, some may question your methods, but no one can question your motive. Your motive was simple, to make Beaumont better for all of us. You will be remembered by all for your accomplishments, your positive attitude and 27 years of service, which is phenomenal. For me personally, I will long remember your words spoken to me. Randy, when you don't know what to do, regardless of the criticism or political pressure, just follow your heart and do what is right for the citizens of Beaumont. So Mayor, congratulations on your well-earned retirement from City Hall. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Samuel.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I look back and we were both much younger then. We've seen some great days in Beaumont. We've been through some storms together, we've slept on ships, we've been wading in the water, we've gone to funerals, we have been to graduations, we've done a whole lot of things together. We've agreed and fought together, we've disagreed and fought, scolded each other, but we've always remained friends. I know your heart, you love the city, you love your job. I know you're not going away because you can't stay away unless you take it out of town, but I've learned a lot from you.
Thank you.
And you've shown me what it is to be a true public servant and for that I appreciate and I say thank you for being my friend, thank you for being my colleague as a council member as well as being my mayor, so great times I'll never forget.
Thank you so much. I feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, over the last couple of years, multiple times, you've reminded me that you're old enough to be my mom.
And that is true.
And so I stopped and you've been the mayor of Beaumont since I was 10 years old and I kind of like Councilmember Turner was talking about, so that's what we know as Beaumont. And so I just want to thank you for 27 years and also want to thank Rodney for the support that he's shown the council over the last 27 years and understanding what it's like being on the opposite side and so I appreciate you allowing Mayor to do this, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
I, I, thank you. I do want to add one thing. Rodney, you have been an excellent example of composure. When I saw attacks against your wife, I know how you felt many times, but I never saw you express it in a manner that was nothing but respectful, even in light of all that was going on around. So you were a pillar for her, so thank you.
Have anything?
You know how I feel.
I do.
And we all know that you love this city and you, you know, you worked hard to move this city forward, not only when you were mayor, but when you were a council member, you worked as a team member of the council to move the city forward with the other mayors that you served with. You know, you've always supported me and I appreciate that and I've supported you and I mentioned the other day, the team that you and Kyle and I have together and you know, we've worked good together and hopefully that will continue with the incoming Mayor, Robin Mouton.
I think it will.
But this is not goodbye, you're not going anywhere, so.
No, I'm still gonna see y'all.
We'll see you around, I'll just say it that way.
I'm not moving out of town as far as I know, not for a while anyway.
Thank you for what you've done for the city and for me.
Thank you very much. And Kyle, you have anything? I know, I know. That's okay, don't say anything.
Like the city attorney said, no goodbyes, you're a great friend of ours and that just doesn't happen. I mean, to be the mayor's a tough job, right? To be the longest-serving mayor in the city's history says so much in itself. I mean, to be the mayor for 14 years and to serve the public for 27 years in the fashion that you did, you know, you're an excellent leader, great person, great friend, the city attorney and you and your husband as well. I mean, for all of us to work together as closely as we have through everything we've faced from all the different storms to, you know, watching you and Rodney sleep on cots literally for two weeks at a time, you know, tough stuff, but y'all never complained, but to have that relationship again with you and the city attorney will always be special. That's really what it's all about at the end of the day, is making progress and it was stated earlier by Councilmember Turner, you don't accomplish anything in life by yourself. You don't accomplish anything of any great magnitude without being able to work with other people and working with other people on a consistent basis. That's how we've all done it for the past 30 years, especially with you and Councilman Samuel and the city attorney, doesn't get much better. And that's what it takes and I think people need to remind themselves of that and you have to think about it all the time and do it all the time. Without it, you don't have anything. So we love you very much. No more goodbyes because you're gonna be a great friend of ours for all of our lives.
Well, I hope so. Thank you, I appreciate that so much and I'm not gonna go into a whole lot because I've already said a lot, but you know, there certainly have been some ups and downs over the years and unfortunately, I might be known as the mayor with the most disasters and maybe that's not the best legacy, but it's one you certainly learn from. You think that you can't handle one more thing and God throws one more thing at you and you handle it fine and that's what we all need to remember and we can always do that and I think the staff here knows that, how I feel about staff and my fellow colleagues and you know, one thing that, that I think of myself as being very loyal, I'm loyal to people and that makes being a public servant a whole lot easier if you are. And so High Points, the Event Center, I mean, I'm so proud of that place, I don't even know what to say, and the lake and I just want the council to strongly consider moving forward with our riverfront development and the things that we want to do and I'll remind everyone that was on council at the time and I think it was only Odwin and I when we came up with the plans and then in '07, when we started, when we opened, we had, like I said, four new council members and we had a lot of criticism on that and sometimes, you know, because you have criticism, you just have to do the very best you can and that's what I've always tried to do and that's what I know, that this council will continue to do the very best you can and what you think is right for the majority of the people. You're not gonna please all the people all the time, but you gotta look toward the majority. There was many times that I didn't always agree with what we did, but you have to think about every part of town as, thank you for saying that, Councilmember Felsaw, because I really tried to be nonpartisan, I talked about that quite often and I think that this position is definitely, should be, a nonpartisan position because we have to serve all the people from a grassroots, very, very close level and you want everyone to feel comfortable with your, with your close leaders that we are. You know, we have presidents, we have congressmen, we have state reps, we have, you know, national reps, we have, but they're not working hand in hand as close with the citizens and I think that's why I love this position so much, is because of that. People say, what are you gonna do? I know you're gonna do something in the future. This is what I wanted to do. I never aspired to be the mayor, I never aspired to be a council member, but that's how my life went and it fit and I was very glad to, to give the time and service that I'd have to our citizens and like I said, I'm not going away, but I want to say to Mayor-elect Mouton, and I've actually already said this to her in person, but that I'm here to help her in any way that I possibly can and I would do the same if, if the other candidate, Roy West, would have won, but I have a familiarity with Robin. I worked with her for six years and I know that she's gonna always do what she thinks is right for the, most of the people of Beaumont. You're not gonna please everyone, but you have to try to please as many as you can and do what you think is right in your heart and follow your heart and I always say, whether it's campaign time or not, some people change the way they do things during campaign time and I don't mean up here, I mean across the country and that, you just can't do that. Have to do what you would do even if you weren't running for a race. So I will be here next week for a short time to canvass the votes and to watch the swearing in of the mayor-elect and then I will be gone. I might watch, depending on what y'all put on the agenda, if there's something important to me, I might stay to watch it, but, but I won't be voting on it. So thank y'all for all your kind words, thanks to the council for the beautiful flowers, thanks to Rodney. He, he doesn't usually come to council meetings and I'm assuming it's because it's my last one and maybe you knew about this presentation back here, I don't know, but, but thank you for always being there. And somebody said, when we were at the EOC so many times, that he never complained, he did. He complained that he had to carry my purse, my phone and my lipstick and that was his job, but, but you did it well and I thank you for that and I know the staff thanks you too. Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all and with that.
Can I have one more?
Oh, sure. And I do too, but go ahead.
I failed to say this. I'd like to recognize the city clerk, Tina Broussard, you know, the city clerk position, unique position. We don't work with her every day, like the city attorney and I work with each other every day, but she's been part of this team.
That's true.
And always supportive and gotten along so well with the city attorney, myself and of course, the mayor and I want to thank you for that, Tina, and I also want to tell you happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. See, he slipped that in. Happy birthday, Tina. Happy birthday.
Can I say one, just really quick?
Certainly, absolutely.
I never ever, ever speak, I just sit and observe and I do my job, but it's been 19 years that we've worked together. It'll be 19 years in August and in 2007, I was appointed as the interim city clerk and I can remember you coming in my office and closing the door and telling me that you really wanted me to be the city clerk and that you would support me and I'm so sorry, I get so emotional, that you would support me and you have always supported me and you've always been there and I've always looked up to you, not just as a female, but as the mayor and to say one day that I want to follow in her footsteps, not as mayor, but just to be a fierce woman, to be a strong woman and you've been all of those things and I look up to you and I'm gonna truly miss you so very much.
I'm gonna miss all of y'all here too.
And it's been an honor to work with you.
Thank you so much. So, so we can stop being a little emotional, I've got a little announcement that has nothing to do with me, although I might go. I was asked to announce that the United States Air National Guard Band of the Southwest, historically known as the 531st Air Force Band, will present a free concert at the Jefferson Theater on this Monday, June 28th at 7:00 PM. The 45-member unit will perform a variety of styles from military marches and patriotic selections to Broadway show tunes, movie themes and timeless concert literature. The concert is free and open to the public and tickets can be picked up at the Beaumont Civic Center box office. That is on this Monday, June 28th at 7:00 at the Jefferson Theater. We have had so many great musical events over the last few days and those people that say there's nothing to do in Beaumont, need to look at our website, look to see what Emily and her group does, look to see what Dean and his group do, we have multiple free and paid concerts, plays, movies, it's just a lot going on and we're bringing our festivals back now. Y'all know that one of the things that I was very excited about, I got to bring one Mardi Gras and then we had COVID, but Mardi Gras was great, that will continue this year and in February, 4th of July next week will be a few days after I leave, but they're planning great things. The last one we had was fantastic with the symphony outside and they're gonna do that again and there's just gonna be a myriad of things going on on the 4th of July, so y'all can look at our website, you can look at our Facebook pages, you can go to Discover Beaumont, we still have Discover Beaumont, I have it on my phone, that tells you what's going on and so please look at that. We're getting ready to start back up with all the fun and exciting things that happen throughout our city and many, many more. So I'm leaving y'all in good hands and with a lot coming up and you're also in excellent financial condition, so that's good too. All right, thank y'all so much. We will now recess into executive session.